Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, March 9th, 2020. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 6th, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 6th, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 6th, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching their decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Moretti.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Orozco. I have not heard from him. Mr. Seiya has been excused. Mr. Cantor has been excused. Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
And Chairman Nansen.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Topley, may I swear in the professionals, please? Thank you, sir. Approval of minutes. Regular meeting, February 10th, 2020. Eligible voters: Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, O'Donnell, Orozco, Seiya, Cantor, and Gonzalez. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Mertens.
Second.
Who's second?
Moretti.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Regular meeting, February 24th, 2020. Eligible voters: Hughes, Moretti, O'Donnell, Cantor, Gonzalez, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Roll call, please.
One second. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Vouchers?
I have no vouchers.
Correspondence?
The only correspondence, I sent all the members the schedule for the training with the New Jersey planning officials, and I just asked that you please get back to me as soon as possible. Let me know if you are not going, if you're not sure, just let me know. I need to know definitely by the middle of April, so that if you're not going, I can cancel your registration because otherwise we don't get a refund, and we have to pay for you whether you go or not.
Okay.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Resolutions. Case number BA 1918. Mary Ellen Evans, resolution granting both variance approval to construct a single-family dwelling on an unimproved street. Eligible voters: Hughes, Moretti, O'Donnell, Cantor, Gonzalez, and Nansen.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Moretti. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, you can. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. The application for the board, case number BA 1831, Secudas Realty LLC, use variance preliminary major site plan. Application is Secuda Realty LLC is applicant owner seeking a use variance approval and preliminary major site plan approval for the expansion of a non-conforming contractor storage and refuge yard on premises known as Block 183, lots 11301, 115, 11601, 11602, 113, Highway 34. Expiration date, June 30th, 2020. You can sit at the table there if you want. How many witnesses do you have tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I have my civil engineer, I have a representative from the property owner and the operator, I also have planning to attend tonight, my professional planner and my traffic engineer.
Okay. You want to bring everybody forward, and we'll go ahead and swear them in?
My professional planner and traffic engineer aren't here yet at this moment, but the others are.
Okay. We'll go ahead and swear everybody in.
Okay, very good.
That you have available.
Yes, sir. Starting with you, may I have your name?
Walter Hopkins, H-O-P-K-I-N.
Thank you, sir.
John Secudas.
I'm sorry? Rick Cifeli.
Can you spell your last name?
C-I-F-E-L-L-I.
Two Ls?
C-I-F-E-L-L-I.
C-I-F-E-L-L-I.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, the witness has sworn, and the notices have been made in proper form, and the board can accept jurisdiction of the case.
Okay, sir. Before we get started, I, Mr., my board engineer has some questions, real quick. We need to get them addressed.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, obviously, in my letter that's revised through March 5th, 2020, I indicated that I still had some significant stormwater management concerns regarding the site plan. Many of those are items that were previously addressed in the previous iteration of it, dated February 4th, 2019. The basic gist of it is, the applicant is proposing a stormwater management basin that's to accommodate some clearing and some millings that have been installed since 2015. At the prior meeting, I indicated to the applicant that there's some other historic clearance and millings that have been installed on the other lots, 11601 and 11602, which no site plan approvals have been obtained for, and no stormwater management infrastructure had been installed for. The plans that were recently submitted within the last 10 days doesn't show any stormwater management infrastructure along the north portion of the site to address those concerns. And, you know, I was kind of hoping that Mr. Hopkins can elaborate to the board why no management infrastructure has been shown at this time. You know, I think we've been pretty apparent. We had a meeting for the application in December, we had a subsequent applicant's meeting at my office in December where I identified these same issues, and we had another meeting at Ms. Beam's office in January, which I again brought up these issues, and we're now March 9th, and I haven't seen anything to address the stormwater management to north of the site. Walt, can you give us an explanation?
Sure. You know, I want to thank the board's professionals, because they have gone out of their way to meet with my office. The, I think the issue here is that there was a portion, a northern portion of the site that did receive additional clearing through the years. Part of that area, 52,000 square feet, well over an acre, is being restored as part of our permits with NJDEP. So, the way that we approached this was that we over-detained the area near the detention basin to compensate for the area of runoff to the northern part of the site. So, I don't believe that we didn't address it. I feel we didn't address it in a manner that Mr. Cunliffe's office was comfortable with at this point.
So, just to clarify that a little bit further, Mr. Chairman, so, when you do a stormwater management analysis, you do an existing condition analysis, and you do a post-condition analysis. And in the existing condition, you're supposed to assume, you know, the most pervious cover that has existed, you know, since the application or prior, you know, prior to any site plan approval is being approved for that, for that, for that site. There's areas on Lot 11602 that had a prior approval for a contractor storage yard where they were approved to install, supplement an existing gravel storage area that has since been partially paved over with asphalt, that has since had millings installed over, and then has, in fact, been expanded beyond what was priorly, prior approved by the board, you know, 2000, 2001 time period. So, those were the areas that I thought I had made it pretty clear to the applicant and Mr. Hopkins that needed to be also addressed with stormwater management infrastructure, and we haven't seen anything on that end. Also regarding, you know, the applicant has made an application to DEP for a transition area waiver buffer averaging plan. We recently received a copy of that as of last week. I think the application was filed on February 24th, 2020. The plan that was submitted with that application doesn't show any of the proposed stormwater management infrastructure, doesn't show any of the proposed site improvements in regards to concrete dolly pads. It's very nondescript with the proposed site improvements that the board, you know, has been seeing. And I'm a little concerned that the Department of Environmental Protection isn't looking at the same application that we're looking at, and the same site that we're looking at. Also on top of that, along with not showing any of the stormwater management infrastructure, their stormwater basin, they're proposing a 24-inch RCP downfall structure with a flare-end section that goes through an area of wetlands buffer addition. My understanding of that, and Jen can confirm or back me up on that, is that typically DEP, when you do a buffer addition, you're required to restrict it as a conservation easement, and you're not allowed to do any disturbance within that. The plan that was submitted to DEP doesn't show the pipe, doesn't show the downfall structure, so I'm concerned how the applicant anticipates that this is actually going to be constructed if it's not on the plans that were submitted to DEP with, as part of that application.
And to that end, if they're using that area as compensation for disturbance elsewhere, you cannot use an area that you're going to further disturb, because the area that you're compensating is supposed to be pristine and create additional buffer. So, not only is the pipe and the downfall and the flare-end section, but in my experience, there's usually like an easement that runs alongside it in case there's maintenance requirements or what have you. You cannot use that area as compensation and not represent it on a plan to the DEP and then turn around and disturb it and say, "I'm going to get a permit for that." That's not how that works, and I just feel like we have plans that are submitted to us that show X, we have plans that are submitting to the DEP that show Y. I don't understand, after all this time, because this application's been pending for quite some time now, why the plans are not consistent and do not represent the things that, I mean, Charlie's talking about drainage, but there's a whole host of things that both he and I have brought up at his meeting, at our meeting collectively, in my letter, in his letter, that are just not simply shown on the plans. And after all this time, waiting 10 months for them to get before us, and let's be clear, this is a code issue. It's not like they're coming here asking for permission, they're asking for forgiveness, and yet, the things that we have repeatedly told them are still not representative on the plans. And so, you know, I'm frustrated, to say the least, and I'm sure Charlie would agree, because he had two meetings with them and specifically discussed this issue twice, not there. I talked about the buffer and moving the containers and things, not there, and the DEP plan, which, let me be very clear, was not submitted to us voluntarily. Charlie asked for it, and that's why we got it. So, I'm just, at this point, here we are in March of 2020, when the application date is 2018, on a code violation, and the plans are still at this point where we're not even close to where we need them to be. It's frustrating on our end, to say the least.
What is y'all's recommendation?
I mean, these plans need to be fixed. I don't even know what to say. I mean, I was very clear, the containers along Route 34 need to move.
So, and then, Mr. Chairman, just to piggyback on the environmental issues.
No, 34, over here.
So, obviously, the prior iterations of the plan didn't show the 150-foot buffer, and then this additional buffer addition along the western portion of the property. Their downfall pipe and flare-end section goes through the buffer addition and then also through the 150-foot buffer. It's going to require the applicant to get a general permit 11 for outfalls and intake structures. Walt, can you provide some testimony on to the status of making an application to the DEP? Anything to that nature on that?
Sure. And I appreciate all that the professionals have had to say. I had a brief conversation with Ms. Beam this evening, and somebody from my office got to talk to Mr. Cunliffe. We want to be transparent about this. The issue with the DEP was that we know that there's going to be modifications to these plans by the time resolution compliance comes through, and by the time the board approves this. So, it was our intent to apply for a general permit after we got approval from the township. That was our strategy, and we have been given guidance by our environmental professionals that it was permitted. If it's not, we'll modify the plans to DEP. I have no problem with that.
I mean, I have a tremendous issue with the application that was submitted, and I'm going to recommend to the board that Charlie draft a letter to the DEP identifying our concerns with this, this plan, because you cannot go to the DEP and ask for a transition area waiver showing reduction in compensation, and then later say, "Hey, oh, there's all these improvements in your compensation area." That area is intended to offset the area that you're disturbing. If you're not leaving it pristine, it doesn't get to count. And so, therefore, the application that's before the DEP is inconsistent with the plans that we have, and therefore, the compensation, the compensation area that they're saying to the DEP is available, is not available. And therefore, they're going to have to figure out another way to work it out, which I just feel is, and I know this environmental professional, and he's excellent, so, and I can't imagine he would make this level of mistake, because I've seen him, you've seen him here multiple times, never have I ever seen him make this level of mistake. This is like permitting 101. You cannot take credit for compensation and then disturb it. I mean, that's basic permitting.
We had that part in Farmer Brown's.
Agreed.
You know, what, how long did it hold up the project?
A long time, years.
Three years, four years.
Yes.
And $100,000 later.
Yes, because what happens is, is once they accept it, that area becomes a conservation easement, which therefore, you don't get the right to disturb, period. So, and they, we had back and forth with them over numerous years about putting in, what was it, sanitary or?
No, it was a outfall.
Same issue.
Detention basin.
Because the town doesn't really get the opportunity to just, you know, waive that issue, and I just feel like, you know, this, this applicant has a very competent team of professionals that I feel need to coordinate better with one another and provide us with the actual plans of what they're proposing. I can tell you, based on what I've looked at, and, and all of these people, Charlie, myself, Mr. Vidiallo, Mr. Hopkins, well, as well as Ms. Cifone, who's not quite here yet, sat in my office, and I was abundantly clear about every structure that's not on a foundation needs to get moved out of that 50-foot buffer, but yet, I still have it in there. I wasn't, I mean, you guys know me now for some time, I'm not subtle. I was very clear. It's still there. So, I'm frustrated at this point.
What part were you talking about?
Along 34, move the containers. And then there's containers in the buffer along 33, too. You know, I was okay with the building on a foundation, but all the other structures that are not on a foundation need to move out of the buffer, 50 feet. And I understand that that may not be what's ideal, but I don't care. It's a 50-foot mandated buffer. You need to move your crap out of the buffer, period. You need to show exactly what you're doing on these plans. You need to give DEP plans that show exactly what you're doing. You need to address the drainage. I mean, this is months and months and months and months and months of delay on a code issue. There's no excuse for this.
So, and, Mr. Chairman, just to piggyback on Jen's comments with the drainage and stormwater management, there's a lot of information that's lacking on, in a stormwater management report as regards to, you know, assumptions for ground cover and, and, you know, flow pass for, for the stormwater runoff in the existing and post-condition that I've asked to be clarified, and it's hard to actually review a stormwater management report without that information. One significant issue that I saw, and I requested it in my very first letter, was additional soil logs in the vicinity of the basin. One has been shown on the plan sheet, and if you go into the back of the stormwater management report, you can look at the log, and based on my calculation, the seasonal high water table is right at the bottom elevation of their basin. DEP requires two foot of separation from seasonal high water table. I have significant concerns regarding the feasibility of putting in a stormwater management basin in that location at the elevation that they've shown without putting in other, other measures, you know. Sometimes you can put in impermeable liners to, to make sure your, your seasonal high water table gets into there. You know, there's other underground detention that you can put, but I, I haven't seen anything that shows me that what's proposed can work in that location based off of the one soil test bit that we've received for that.
Now, will that carry, the proposed basin that you have there, does that take the whole site in consideration or not?
No, Mr. Chairman. So, like I discussed, there's a majority of Lot 11601, that's the southeast corner of the property, and Lot 11602, which is the northeast corner of the property. Those areas flow undetained in a northerly direction through the wetlands that's going to be restored by the application to Ming Mahone Brook, but there's no stormwater management structures or detention system or any means of water quality proposed in that vicinity. The portion of the site that is going to that basin is the westerly portion. If you look at this plan, that's hatched gray, that portion and a little bit more than that is going to that basin, and that was the area that was cleared circa 2015 that prompted the applicant's violation and this subsequent site plan application to the board.
But I want to make abundantly clear that Charlie's letter prior to the one he issued this past week was dated February 2019. It wasn't a month ago, it was a year ago. And we're still at this level where we are, we do not have enough information for this to move, which is very disheartening.
So, and then, just the last thing, Mr. Chairman, you know, obviously, the township ordinance requires that any parking areas, circulation driveways are supposed to be paved with asphalt, and there's different varying pavement sections. The applicant is asking for a waiver to install millings, asphalt millings over the entire site. My understanding is that the Department of Environmental Protection has issued some guidance documents on the approved reuse of millings for different uses. As part of their application to DEP for their TAW and then also their GP 11, I would ask that the applicant be required to provide some documentation from DEP that they don't take issue with the use of millings as a surfacing material for this site. So, should the board rule favorably and, and grant a waiver for the asphalt requirement, you know, should the property change hands five, 10 years from now, at least we have documentation from DEP which says that this is an approved use for this site.
What's your suggestion at this point?
I think they need to clean up the plans.
Okay.
I mean, honestly, I don't even know that it's worthwhile to even provide any testimony whatsoever. I think there's a lot of work that still needs to be done on these plans before we can even opine on them. You know, I especially don't think that there's any ability for a planner to testify this evening, because there's still so, I can't say to you at this point that there's no negative impact. I mean, this is not a permitted use, let's not forget, until Charlie is okay with the stormwater management, which he's not, and so I can't even opine on that to you one way or the other. They need to fix these plans and clean them up, and actually listen to what we've advised and, and do what we, we told them to do.
Okay. Are you hearing what my professionals are saying?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we are. I've had some phone discussions with your professionals in the last couple days, because they were kind enough to kind of give me a preview of how they felt, which I appreciate. We do want to go through the process. We would like to create a plan that could earn the board's approval. Your professionals feel we're a long way away from that. My main concern at this point, as the attorney, is to make sure my team has the information they need. We've gotten some additional comments.
I think they've had it for a long time.
Right. We've gotten some additional, well, I mean, my, and your professionals, you know, my engineer has addressed certain items in, in, using methods that your professionals do not accept. I mean, I don't think it's worth it to have my engineer go through the comments and discuss how he's addressed those items. He hasn't skipped any items. Certainly, there's some questions about the buffer and whether everything needed to be out or not, that's separate from the reports, and I understand what your planner's saying. But it was not our intent, it was not my team's intent to leave out and just ignore comments from the board. The way our engineer has calculated the drainage area, what he's considered as pre-disturbed and post-disturbance, I think took a while to work out. I think both of our engineers are on the same page, sort of, as to that area at least, I believe.
Not in the stormwater management report that was submitted as of, you know, 10 days ago. So, I've had some discussion with Mr. Hopkins' office this afternoon and described what I've just elaborated and, and said to the board today. What I would say, Mr. Chairman, is the township does a pretty good job of keeping a record of prior site plan approvals for properties that have been before the board. It would behoove the applicant to, either through Eileen, whether it's through an open request or whatever, get a copy of the prior approvals for all the lots involved in this application. I would say more specifically, lots 11601 and 11602, in regards to what was approved impervious area, what was not approved impervious area, and that should be what's considered the, the existing condition for the stormwater management analysis, so.
Well, see, they, number two, nothing should be draining out over that wetland area. There shouldn't be anything draining out, especially not off the site.
Yeah, so, like I said, especially to the northern, northerly portion of the site, there's no stormwater management infrastructure. So, you can collect that stormwater, detain it, treat it, meet the reductions, and then discharge to the wetlands, you know, showing that you've met the appropriate reductions pre-verse-post, but I haven't seen anything showing that they're proposing any stormwater management infrastructure to the north portion of the site there, so.
Got some work to do.
We certainly do, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to proceed however the board or your professionals want tonight. If your board or your professionals feel that it makes sense to stop here and just have us work on revisions, we can do that. If you want to discuss any of these other issues a little bit further, I'm happy to do that also.
I think, even if we go down through Charlie's letter, go through Jen's letter.
Right.
The plan's not, isn't going to reflect what they're, they're stating.
I understand. We got the letters, and we see that there's still a, a good deal of change that they want to see. I understand that.
Let's.
Yeah. So, can, can we just, since we're here, can we have our engineer, and this, this doesn't really relate, it doesn't really relate to the specific items that I think your engineer, your planner and your engineer brought up. This is really just a very brief overall description of how our engineer has planned to organize the site, more in terms of operational. It would probably take less than two minutes, three minutes.
I don't have the point.
Okay.
You're going to come back with new plans.
Okay.
We're going to have to have that same conversation at that point.
That's fine.
It makes more sense.
The thing of it is, some of those trail, some of the trailers, they got to move, get here.
Of course, of course.
So, that's going to affect the whole operation of the site.
We were talking generally about how we're organizing and planning to park vehicles and stuff like that because if there's going to be further changes as to that, the sooner we would know that, too. That would be helpful.
My point though is that when you move the structures that need to be moved, that may change.
The method that we use to park the vehicles and how we're proposing that won't, but the configuration certainly may, unless we're told otherwise, certainly, then it might need to.
I'm not really sure what you mean by method, other than pulling it into park. I really just think these plans need to be fixed, resubmitted, and then have one comprehensive hearing.
That's fine, okay.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying.
Fine with us.
Along 33, you've got how many containers there? You know, it's going to have to move, they're going to have to be put somewhere.
Understood.
So, that's going to totally affect your whole circulation.
Yes. Understood. That's fine, that's fine.
Eileen, do we have another date? And please, get in touch with the professionals.
Yeah.
Get these plans cleaned up, and let's get back in here and get this done.
I understand. And, Mr. Chairman, we understand that we're a zoning compliance application, and we appreciate the time your professionals have given us, and I know it's taken a long time to get this far. I will just remind the board, I wasn't the attorney when they initially submitted the application, but, but it's still been a long time.
Okay.
March 23, that's our next meeting?
Are they going to have enough time to get, get this, the plans cleaned?
We ask if we could go to the next, a month, a month from now roughly, if it's acceptable to everybody.
Well, not only that, our engineer and our planner need those plans, you know, at least 10, 10 to 15 days prior.
Understood, understood completely.
Is that going to be enough time for you to get everything that they need so they approve what you submit, and then when you come back, they're in agreeance with you so the board could proceed, you know, on the move?
Well, I hate to try to put it off any further.
No, let's, let's go.
It's been so long, I'd rather come back in the four weeks, and we'll certainly try to dot every eye and cross every.
If not, we just have to.
You're going to have to please them.
Exactly.
You know, before they could say to us, "It's okay to proceed," and then we could proceed and we're done.
I'd rather come back in those four weeks.
And reschedule.
And get as far as I can and make progress, even if it costs my team to come out a whole another night at their expense. I, unless you want me to, I mean, but I think in four weeks.
As long as you feel that you could complete it, that's good. I didn't think you could do it that fast.
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be an effort, it's going to be tight. We're talking about getting some more soil logs and things like that, and, but we'll do our best.
April 13?
Yeah, let's do April 13, and if.
So, we want to go to six?
So, you know, because the board professionals need it 10 business days in advance.
Go to the last meeting in April.
Right.
April 27?
I'll have to work it out. I have another hearing, but I'll have maybe somebody else in my office cover that, something.
Okay. Do the April 27?
April 27.
Okay. Okay, case number BA 1831, Sakuta Realty LLC will be carried to April 27, 7:30 PM with no further notice. And we're good with the extension of time, so. What other cases on for that night? Do we have any?
Connolly, which is a single-family residence on a, on improved street, which is partially heard already, and K-10 is coming back. They were partially heard.
Yeah, might have to move K-10. I think we can get through Connolly.
Well, Connolly is also waiting for stuff from DEP and easements, so they may not be, so it may be K-10 in this.
Okay, well, then, let's leave it as it is.
And K-10 is mostly heard, I think, they just had to move some.
Yeah, but they had to move some stuff and they, there's, I don't think we can wrap that up very quickly either.
Well, I have no openings till May, so.
Okay, okay. Okay, we'll see you April 27.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please, get, if you have questions, get in, get ahold to Charlie and Jen.
We will, thank you.
Please do. Okay, is there any other business before the board? See, and none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Moretti, seconded by Mr. Roscoe, I didn't see you come in. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sony Board adjourn at 8:05.